Okay, call this meeting to order. We have some very important people's business to deal with today. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. So, we're now about two and a half weeks since our tragedy occurred in Building Two. We are working diligently to create continuity of operations. As you know, we had four major departments that were located in Building Two. On the third floor, we had Public Works. On the second floor, we had Public Utilities. On the first floor, we had Planning, a dash of information technology, and then in the basement, information technology and our printing operation. So, I'm extremely pleased with the work that the staff has done in figuring out a way to pull it together, to come back together, to form their work units again, to roll up their sleeves and realize that they are public servants and that they are able to, as best they can, reform their work units and start to function. I appreciate the public's patience in working with us to allow us time to overcome the shock of this event and to take the time to acknowledge and to remember those that we lost and those that were severely injured. We've worked diligently to support those families. I'm extremely proud of the amount of support that our team has given it, and I'm even more appreciative of all the council members' efforts to be there for us, to support us, to help us through this tragedy. And I want to thank all my employees for what they've been able to endure and the efforts that they are making to come back up and be able to serve the public as they have in the past. So, we're going to provide you a briefing today by our Director of Public Works and the department directors that have been impacted. We're going to kind of go immediate continuity of operations. Then we're going to get Tom Nicholas, our Facility Engineer, up there to do interim facilities. And then Tom's going to stay at the podium and provide you a long-term perspective, a course of analysis brief, if you will, for those of you that understand what that is, options that were based on what we have and what we think we've got to deal with going forward. It's not a decision brief at this time. It's just to start the conversation of things that we got to deal with so that we can continue to function as a top-notch government. So, with that as a lead-in, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Johnson, who's hiding over there because we've got a lot of exhibits up here, and I'm going to be his number-one pointer. So, Mark, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, council members. We're here today to give you an overview of the continuity of operations plan we've developed in a very short period of time. The flow of the presentation is going to be, I'm going to give a quick intro. I'm going to talk about the third floor. Then Bob Montague, Director of Public Utilities, is going to come up and talk about the second floor. Then Director of Planning, Bobby Tahan, is going to talk about planning in the first floor. And then, I'll call him Deputy Director, Kevin Farley, IT, is going to come up and talk about the IT, the basement. The building itself contains four floors. It's about 95,000 square feet. We have roughly 100 employees in that building. Okay? I'm not going to give you the numbers, but that's basically where we are. The plan, you'll see the first bullet, Tom put it in there, commenced 6:30 on Saturday. Actually, Tom really started around 9:30, 9:45, 10:00 Friday night when I talked to him on the phone. He was already working the gears, engaging his staff to really make things happen. And what they did is they put together a core team that would work with the departments on Saturday while we were in the EOC, working the situation. He would pull members out, get an understanding of what we needed, how big of a space and everything, and then they went to work trying to identify those spaces throughout the city and other city buildings. I just want to acknowledge the team from Facilities Management, Gary Arnold and Barry Shockley; Building Maintenance, Buddy Gilbert, Brian Duffendall; Information Technology, that really stepped up, Mark Sinclair, Melvin Strawhand, and David Noraga. They really did an outstanding job. And I also want to say there was a whole team behind them that really stepped up and acted like we were all family, and they just made things happen. It was an incredible experience, and it still is an incredible experience today. And I really appreciate everything everyone did. The members that got interviewed, Public Works, Public Utilities, Planning and IT, again, this team just gelled and focused extremely hard on what the needs were, what the space needs were, and also what the condition of the employees were when they really cited those areas. The team briefed the management leadership team Sunday, 12 noon, and right after that meeting, they went to work to identify those spaces. Now, for Public Works, the Director's Office, Building Center and Admin is in Building 23. That's the, I'll call it the old elementary school on North Landing Road. Building Nine, which is Building Maintenance, we moved Transportation, Stormwater and Traffic Engineering. Those are pretty much your project managers. You can see in the picture right there, that is what we call a hoteling space. We have set up 12 workstations where we have our project managers working. Right now, and it's extremely short-term, we've set up where they work one day in the office at that space. The following day, they're either working at home or they're working offsite somewhere. And they are functioning, I will tell you that. That group right there, I asked a question, they're actually working on about $150 million of projects, right there, right then. Okay. Building Eight, which is across the street from Building Maintenance, is where our contracts office is. We've got our coastal engineering group in that, and they're functioning. As you can tell, they're working with the Army Corps of Engineers to get some beach replenishment projects going. Public Works, operations down at Dam Neck, they've opened up their arms. They've really brought in, or allowed us to bring in, people from the third floor. We have the stormwater, water regulatory section housed at that facility. And right now, this is extremely short-term. We're still making adjustments and modifications. We knew we were going to do that. We really packed our people in to begin with, one, to get them all back to work, or as many as possible could come back to work, and really try and work with them, help them out, get them counseling, and yet get them back to work so that they can at least do their job, function as best they can, try to get back to normal as best we can. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Bob Montague, who will talk about the second floor.
Well, good afternoon. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, members of council, it's a pleasure to see you today. Wanted to give you an update on the status of operations for Public Utilities. Since this event, our Operations and Maintenance Division has continued to work as normal, fulfilling normal operations. The public water system and the sewer collection system were unimpacted. We have been working hard, along with Facilities Management, our Building Maintenance Group and IT, to re-stand, or stand our services back up. One of our largest challenges was relocating our call center and billing operations. There was a planned renovation on part of the second floor in Building Two that was going to begin, so we had a head start on some of those efforts. But our call center and billing operations have moved to Building 23 a little bit sooner than anticipated, and they resumed providing services yesterday, opening the call center. So, that is going pretty well, amazingly smooth, given the size of that operation and all the technology that's involved. In Building 23, there is no space to service walk-in customers, so we are doing that a little bit differently. We now have a presence here in Building One in association with our Treasurer's Office. So, our customers who come in to pay connection fees are now doing that by appointment downstairs at the Treasurer's Office, and that's where we are also servicing customers who need assistance with their accounts that can't be handled either online or over the telephone. And customers who are either paying connection fees or need individualized assistance with their accounts are calling to make appointments at 385-4171. In terms of billing, our meter-reading operations have gone on since this event, and bills and notices have continued to be produced and mailed or emailed to our customers. Our Water Service Inspectors have resumed their work. They're working most, mostly all order types, including our scheduled Water Service turn-ons and turn-offs. We are not working delinquent turn-offs right now as we're trying to resume our normal operations, and we will be making announcements as that work continues in the future. Our engineering group has been relocated to our Operations and Maintenance Facility on Dam Neck Road. Our active construction projects have continued along with our Public Utility Construction Inspectors doing their routine inspections. Scheduled projects are being prioritized, and we're looking at both internal and external project management resources to staff those projects. That work, that analysis is underway right now. We don't know, at this point in time, the extent of any delays that we may have with our capital program, but as I mentioned, that work is underway right now. Our Planning Department support functions with the DSC and permits and inspections in terms of reviews that we routinely do have resumed. Customers who need assistance with water and sewer mapping information can get assistance, as they normally do, by calling 385-8942. There's also an email address at PUengineer@vb.gov.com. These are routine methods of getting in touch with our engineering group, so that's not new. Currently, our public kiosks for builders and developers to access mapping information are not available, but we're working on standing those up at the Dam Neck facility. Some of our regulatory compliance programs, including our Backflow Prevention Program and our Fat Soil and Grease Program, have been ramped down for the time being as we are moving staffing to other priorities right now, but we will be working to get those back up and running as soon as we can. Our last major program in regulatory compliance is our Root Control Program, and that has continued on schedule. So, again, our normal water and sewer services are available. Customers can call us, as they routinely do, for scheduled turn-ons and turn-offs and any assistance that they may need with account information at our normal number, 385-4631, which resumed operations yesterday.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Let's go to the first floor, Bobby Tahan.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. The Planning Department, we were able to find four locations for our staff to relocate to. 19, Building 19 North, which faces Princess Anne Road, we were able to stand up not just our permits and inspections functions, but also our customer service functions. So, for those that are looking for zoning questions or any other development question, they're able to go there. We have staff available to answer questions. We're doing our best in that space to make sure that we're able to continue to stand up operations. That location was officially open on June 17th, but the public found us the previous Thursday, and we were able to at least issue permits. We did have staff available, and we were able to help them out the best that we could. Luckily, staff was, felt the need to come back to work to try to find some normalcy. And so, they had the opportunity to still have, all those functions still operate. As far as the Director's Office, Planning Administration, Zoning Administration, and also my Management Support Division, we're located in the Clark Nixon Building, which is the offices of our Strategic Growth Area Office and Economic Development. We've been able to get set up, both the SGA Studio and some of the vacant offices, to continue to stand up those operations as well. The actual inspectors that go out in the field were located at the EMS Administration Building on Virginia Beach Boulevard. EMS has been so kind to our inspectors. You can see in this photo here, they had this set up for them when they walked in that morning. And they actually, the inspectors came in pretty early. The 17th is our official opening date. We had inspectors come in, I believe it was the previous Monday, to try to find some normalcy for their inspections. And EMS was prepared to take them in, and we're just very thankful for them taking care of our inspectors. Like I said, a lot of the inspectors wanted to get back to work, to find, to get back in their groove. And so, a lot of the things that we have been doing, we've been doing since that previous Monday, not this Monday, but the last Monday. We have actually, over that timeframe, from June 1st, we were able to review over 700 permits and do over 1,200 inspections during that timeframe. Again, a lot of the employees were, wanted to get back to some normalcy. And so, some of them worked from home. Some of them were dealing with emergencies such as certificate of vacancies and power cut, turn-ons and other things like that. So, as far as the Development Services Center, they are located in the Sandler Center. We've been able to locate space for them so that they can start the review process for civil engineering site plan review. The key for us is that we have tried to focus everyone to the municipal center to obtain any permits and obtain any, and answers to any questions that they have. So, 19 North, although small, it's very busy. That's where we have staff available to answer all the questions. So, these other locations are set up by appointment only at this point in time.
All right. Kevin Farley will talk about IT's relocation.
Thank you, Mark. Again, I'm Kevin Farley. I'm here to represent our CIO, Peter Wallace. He was already scheduled to be at a security and cybersecurity event out of town, so I will run through this activity for him today. We do have multiple relocations for IT. So, our database team and our data science team moved over to Building 10 in the basement of the Courts Building. Building 17 is currently housing our data center staff members. The data center staff are spending their remote capability working hours in Building 17, but they do have to report to the data center in Building Two to take care of some of the business there, to make sure that work is still being done. Building Two, again, we talked about the data center rotating shifts. In order for them to be able to work, they had to be escorted in their initial work times. They had printing work to do for the organization, so they were doing printing for things like school payroll checks and statements. They were doing police false alarm letters that go out, public utilities bills also had to be printed, as well as commissioner revenue certifications and receipts. They were doing that work between about 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. During that time, we have been able to adjust their time schedule. After that first week, week and a half, now they're able to work 5:00 PM to about 1:00 AM to keep up with the printing. So, we have been able to print all of the jobs that were needed to be printed, so they are on time and up to date with all those activities that are going out. We did have, as we mentioned, GIS was located on the first floor. They have relocated to Building 21. We also moved our public infrastructure support team. Those are the staff members in IT that support Public Works and Public Utilities. They also co-located to Building 21. Building 22, we had a member that's primarily working on our next-generation network and our fiber connection activity. That person moved over to Building 22 with our Unified Communications Staff. It was a location already inhabited by IT. Our IT Business Center that does the HR and payroll activities for our department moved to Building Five. Housing Resource Center, we moved over to the HRC on the third floor. We're co-located with the Department of Human Services. As some of the other gentlemen had mentioned today, when we moved over to Building 21 and Building 10, those staff members were very welcoming to staff. They had welcome activities to integrate them with the staff members that were already there, and they'd been over backwards to make sure that they felt like they had a place to live and reside. So, we do appreciate both what FIRE has done for us in Building 21, and certainly DHS over at HRC to help the staff feel like they did have a good place and a great place to work. We also have staff members out at Columbus. It's 4801 Columbus Street. That was primarily the administrative and leadership areas of IT, moved to that space. It is leased space, and IT already had a presence in that location. For us, we really had a two-pronged activity. One was certainly just as the other departments to make sure that staff were relocated, but then we did jump in with the work for Facilities Management, Public Works and Building Maintenance, and IT to concentrate on relocating the other staff members of the organization so they could do their work. We had a couple of things actually work in our favor that made that a lot faster than a typical activity. We utilized computers that we had in our warehouse that were slated for computer replacements. We do a five-year replacement cycle with our computers, so we essentially distributed those computers to staff that we could not gain access to their computers that were in Building Two. We had to do the same thing with the telephones. So, we had, we were working on a voice-over- IP transition for our telephones, so we distributed the voice-over-IP phones that were part of that migration out to the new staff. If we had not had those activities, we would, in all likelihood, still be today with staff members without working phones and working computers. So, our Unified Communications Team and our computer, end-user computing team did pull a lot of long days and late hours. Every person that needed a phone or computer has one, working phone and computer. We were also able to port their existing telephone numbers to their new phones. So, when they had a seat at their desk and they had access to their voicemail and their telephone numbers, when it rang, it rang at their desk, and they could pick it up and try to conduct business as close to normal as possible. We also had to deploy about 1,400 software programs out to those computers. Because IT has its next-generation network in place, and because the fiber touched a lot of these facilities already, we were able to remotely deploy that software without having to pull the computers into the office to do that work. So, the work and the improvements that we've been making over time has really helped the organization to be able to be much more agile than we have in the past and to be, again, able to conduct business as quickly as possible. Some of the issues that IT has run into, as well as Public Works, are power availability and network availability. When you add a lot of new members to a location that were not previously working there before, that took some work to make sure that that would happen. We also found some cabling in older buildings that could not carry the IT infrastructure and the access to the applications as they had in their previous location. So, we do have some locations where we have some network cables where we would prefer not to have them. Obviously, we've had those secured, so they're not a hazard to the employees, but certainly they're temporary locations. It's certainly not a permanent location for that. The other thing I would say, as far as IT, we were able to take advantage of the volunteer resources that were available to us with the psychologists, the chaplains, and the counselors on-site. So, we did have some group sessions for our employees and certainly individual sessions for those employees that needed it. So, that with a lot of work to do in a short period of time, I think, has actually helped our employees get back to, again, get back to work. So, as Mr. Hanson said, and everybody's mentioned today, I'm really proud of what the team has done to step up and do their work. And there was a lot of work ahead of the whole group and whole team, and I can't say enough of the cooperation from all the departments and agencies to make this happen. And again, we really appreciate it, and we're proud to have a part in getting folks back to work.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Tom Nicholas is going to come up and talk about what our ongoing planning efforts are.
Thanks, Mark. So, when you're in this kind of an environment, a lot of things happen at the same time. So, you sort of start to scramble on where are you going to put 384 people, 28 locations. Don't think for a second that those were 384 vacant seats with computers, phones, power, and everything. And most of them were empty rooms where you scramble for furnishing, you scramble for desks, you scramble for seats, you run extra power drops to those pieces of furniture because they're not anywhere near wall plugs. IT, like they were just amazingly wonderful to work with, bringing phone drops and IT computer drops into the space to get it up and running. But really, we got the approval to do that at noon on Sunday. By noon on Monday, I had an execution group going, and Mr. Hanson was reminding me that we couldn't stay in this situation very long. You scramble to get people back to work, and then you start to look at, well, who can stay there and who needs to go somewhere else, or who needs improvements to their space. So, obviously, some people were put in extremely Spartan conditions that required us to get together quickly and do some furniture orders. Had a team of people doing that. So, we are in transition in those 28 locations right now, even from sort of fold-up tables and quick chairs to something a little more livable for the period. We also started on Monday afternoon looking at leased space for the Planning Department. As you look at the way they were laid down quickly, they interface with the public an awful lot, and they have been extremely responsive to moving into the space that we had available. 19 North is probably the biggest challenge. There's a lot of public that comes to permits and inspections. And so, we know we can't stay there any longer than possible. And I'll get back to that. So, we have a plan for them right now, and I'll talk to that on the next slide. At the same time, there's pieces of Public Works, Public Utilities, and IT that also have to get out of their quick space into something a little longer. And then I'll give you a presentation in a couple of minutes here on what a long-term sort of end state might be to get everybody back to normal. So, we had a very generous offer from an owner of a facility at 2875 Saber Street, Virginia Beach, with two suites. There's a Suite 500 is 20,475 square foot of space, and Suite 250 is 9,000 square foot. The owner of this property came to the city and offered us a year of nominal rent to take over this space, and it fits quite nicely with what we were looking for, for the Planning Department. So, immediately, we started to look at how to do that. This would be an intermediate home for planning, which is 132 people out of those ones that are spread out. We would also make space for city treasurer's staff if, in fact, there was a need for people to come and do financial transactions at the planning spaces. We went through a very accelerated program development. Those of you who heard me talk before, that's where we go through the people in the department and identify the spaces that are required for each person. We look at the adjacencies for the people and how they have to work together, and then how they face the public, how they service what they serve. how they face the public, how they service what they serve. We had an architecture firm on an annual service contractor with us that really dropped everything they were doing too and joined us at the table for that. Normally takes about three months to do it, and we did it in a week because that's what we had. We had started discussions on the build-out and provided the information on that program to the owner, and we are currently working with them on the details of what that build-out will exactly look at. And we have a target move-in date of 1:00 July. Move-in meaning we take possession and we're starting to put our stuff in it. It would be sometime after that before the Planning Department is up. But we are very aggressively working to get planning out of these intermediate spaces into a more consolidated space where it will be easier for the public to access them, and they will function much better than they are able to right now. And again, I have plans that are in their infancy to do a similar thing with Public Utilities and Public Works and Information Technology. Okay, so before we go on to anything longer term, can I entertain any questions about how we put people, where we put them, or why, or issues that might have come up, things you have questions with?
Mr. Ward.
It's not questions, but it's a comment, and I've shared this with you outside. I've looked, I've been to Economic Development, EMS, and Building 19 over your scene where planning has been. I got to tell you, guys have done a phenomenal job, and what is really impressing me is how the other, the other groups are working with, with the planning staff to do it. I don't think those guys ever want to leave EMS. They're, they've kind of adopted them. They, apparently, they go in every morning, and there's new snacks out there for them and everything, and they all have backpacks, and you know, it's, but you're talking to the inspectors there, they're really, they really feel like they're a part of it. But yeah, I got to tell you, going over to Building 19, you're, you're right, that is not a long-term solution. Those guys are wedged in there, and it just, it just doesn't work. So I'm glad to see that this is, this is going to do it because, I mean, they're, they were talking about how they're integrating the, taking paper plans and putting them in a cellar, and they can't really do that right now. But the other thing I got to tell you, which really makes me feel good, is there's a couple of contractors when I was over there getting permits, and they weren't, they weren't really complaining. They're saying, just tell us when we can do this, when we can do that. So everybody's working together on this, even the public side of it. So everybody realizes it's not, it's not optimal, but it's doing well. So you guys have done a fantastic job with, with moving them around, so good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, move forward. Thank you.
I'm going to tee up the next one. Okay, so Sunday noon, I was bedding down 384 people in 28 locations. Monday noon, I was trying to find leased space for 132 people in the Planning Department. And Tuesday noon, Dave said, Tom, what are we going to do for the next 50 years at the municipal center? And actually, it wasn't quite that dramatic, but in essence, that's what we're talking about, is how do we recover the workspace from the loss of this 95,000 square foot building that was so vital to these four departments and come back together at the municipal center in a better, stronger way? So in order to talk about that, I thought it was important to do a little bit of scene setting. And a number of you have heard this stuff for the last four years from me, and a number of you have not heard this from, so I'm going to go briefly through where we were on the Thursday before the event. We had a C.I.P. fully funded, funded is probably, I should have said approved for most of these, but the New City Hall, $50,250,000, and I'll talk about where we are on that. We had an approved C.I.P. for Building 1 renovations. It's a $29 million project, but in this last budget that we just approved, it was approved for 2.8 million to get us started. And we had a C.I.P. for 3512 for the Public Safety Building renovation. That's for 18 and a half million dollars. Again, approved, a million was funded out in fiscal year '23. And I'll talk about, there would be a, there would have been a future C.I.P. to come in that would have done some conversion of Building 2 floors for swing space. Why is that? So, City Hall replacement status. We had opened bids on the 30th of April. Our low bidder, Mackenzie Construction, at 36.9, started to work with us. Just reminding everyone that the construction bid does not include a lot of things in the C.I.P., such as design fees, furnitures, fixtures, equipment, I.T., audiovisual, linel, moving, and some contingency. In order to preserve some of our contingency funding, we did conduct value engineering with Mackenzie to, to lower their bid amount. We currently have reached agreement on that. We've taken those documents and provided them to our architect, who then prepares what's called an addendum that just goes back out to the builder saying, here's the new revised construction documents, give us a revised number. That should come in within the next 10 days, and then we will be able to proceed to awarding that contract, getting the notice to proceed issued, again, with a targeted beneficial occupancy in the summer of 2021. When this building is emptied, we had a program to improve this building to be host to two other departments. The building itself that we are in is 83,973 gross square feet. As I noted there, it would be vacant in the fall of '21 when we move into the New City Hall. And we have a consultant right now on board who is evaluating the four departments in Building 2 to see which two fit best from a business perspective that would have gone in there. I put down here, if the renovation design was done prior to the fall of '21, we would be starting construction as soon as this building was empty, and we'd be moving back into this building with two other departments in the summer of '23. And then two, those two Building 2 departments yet to be determined would move in in the fall. Public Safety Building, the next building to be renovated due to condition, really, it's a 58,000 square foot building that houses First Precinct and Police Admin. We had an opportunity, once we took two departments out of Building 2 and put them over into this building when it was renovated, we'd had two vacant floors, which, if we put in a relatively low-dollar-value C.I.P. and we renovated those two floors for swing space, we could move the majority of First Precinct and Police Admin into a building that the city owns while we renovate Building 11 and move them back. And one of my goals in doing this is not to ever rent space for swing space. It's totally wasted taxpayer dollars. So we had that plan, which would have enabled us to finish renovation on Building 11 and get the police back into a renovated building in the fall of '25. But things changed on Friday, the 31st. We now have a large building in the mix. Building 2, which Mark talked about a little earlier, is a 95,000 square foot building, and we now have an opportunity to repurpose that building. If we were to repurpose just the first, second, and third floor, which is the area that does not house the server and the I.T. department right now, we have a 66,000 square foot opportunity. If we were doing the whole building, it's a 95,000 square foot building. And we've also already been pretty public in our assertions that we would not reoccupy this building by Public Works, Public Utilities, Planning, or I.T. So I went to work thinking about, so what can we do, looking at this mix of where we were going, with this new reality in Building 2? And I thought, well, if you're going to go, go big. We have, because of the, when I put this together, it was the events of the past week, it's so two weeks ago now, but we have an opportunity to do a comprehensive approach at this point, which gets the New City Hall built and provides newer renovated space for Public Works, Public Utilities, Planning, and I.T. at the municipal center, and also provides new or renovated space for First Precinct and Police Admin. So I've created three courses of action, free to consider, or three options. There are infinite number of perturbations to these options, so there's nothing sacrosanct about the exact features of it, but it gives you something to think about. Option one, we could do a design bid build for an enhanced City Hall. You know, we haven't quite awarded that contract yet, we haven't started that contract yet. We could stop award. We could then use available C.I.P. funds. Again, there's $50,250,000 provided to us. I think we have about 44 and a half sitting in that in cash because all we did was design and a lot of I.T. relocations. We could have the A.E. first prepare a couple of concepts for you to look at, you know. So if you think of where the New City Hall is going to go, which is down in the parking lot towards George Mason, if you slide that building 300 yards to the west and you put a 50,000 square foot wing on each side, for example, that's 100,000 square feet that takes care of the four departments that were displaced, you have a new City Hall with two side wings, and it houses all four departments plus the original group that was going into the New City Hall, and it enables you to demolish Building 2. You know, at that point, you sort of have a grand open area in front of the building. By doing that, we'd be getting 100% plans and construction documents prepared by our designer, who already did City Hall. We could go back out for new project bids, select a low bidder, build this new enhanced City Hall, and at that time, continue with a current plan or separate C.I.P.s to solve the public safety problem, renovating either Building 1 or 11. So how much might that cost? So a comment on cost right now. I've tried really hard to show you the same package on each of the three options. So they are all inclusive of the same problem set. They each have different amounts of money that would have to be raised at different times, and I'll talk to that. So this 144 million for an enhanced City Hall, 95 and a half of that would be for the City Hall itself, and I listed out, so we've already spent $5 million on design and I.T. fiber relocation, a very loose, we had a $261 per square foot. That includes stormwater and a number of things that usually aren't in per square foot. But I took that cost times 234,000 and come up with 61 million for construction of a new, bigger building. We'd need some additional money for design. We really wouldn't lose the design we've already done, except for the site civil. We'd have some additional costs for furniture, fixtures, equipment, I.T., audiovisual, moving, and contingency. I know we're fat at 10%, but just big ground planning numbers. So for 95 and a half, you'd get a larger City Hall, at which point, we could renovate Building 1, which is about a $30 million project, or Building 11. And I put in there, it's possible that you could renovate 1 or 11. You wouldn't need them both, but for the sake of this comparison. So this could be reduced by either 19 or 30, but when you see the other options, if you want to look at the whole picture, they're both there. How quickly could we do that? Really, Mosley Architects, who's been in here with me to talk about the New City Hall a number of times, could put together some concepts for us pretty darn quick, and then based on what concept we liked best, move to 100% construction documents and solicit by 1:00 June of next year, opening bids by the middle of July, construction contract going in the fall, with construction complete in the fall of '23. That means that the New City Hall and the four departments that are displaced are back in, that's new single building in the fall of '23, at which point, when that was over, we would design and renovate Building 1 and 11, or Building 1 or 11. And because of timing, some of that could start as early as the spring of '21, but it wouldn't finish until the fall of '25. So the police would still end up in a renovated building at the same time they were in. Funding timing, this one works pretty well because 50 million is already on the table. We would need 45 and a half required in fiscal year '21, which would be the next budget cycle, in order to award the construction contract when design was complete. So we would be providing that as an issue in the next upcoming budget year. And then 49 million required in FY '22 for Buildings 1 and 11. Again, no requirement to do both of those. We would be doing one of them for the Police Department. Pros and cons. So the number one pro, when you do something like this, is you, doing design bid build, you get 100% control of what you're going to get. You get complete plans and specifications, everything's laid out, everybody's sure what they're going to get. And as you saw when we went through the City Hall design, that's an iterative process, and Mosley does that quite professionally. All city core services are delivered under a single roof, similar to Richmond, similar to most of what Norfolk does. You could walk into a single building and see Public Works, Public Utilities, Planning, I.T., City Councils, Treasurer, and the price is determined competitively. Cons, this is the slowest delivery method, as I'll show you. The biggest con from my perspective is it extends the stay in this building by two years. We had a wonderful, wonderfully successful experience in the last two weeks relocating 384 people to 28 locations. If this building goes down, like I'm afraid it could because of a variety of mechanical and electrical issues, and we have 320 other people that have to go to temporary locations, we have a different magnitude of problem. So I'm a little skittish about this, but like all things, if that's what we do, we'll make it work. And as I put there, you'd still need to do a separate project to get Virginia Beach Police Department into a renovated, or building. Option two, this one is much faster, much faster. As we learned with the work that we did at the Sports Center, we can prepare a relatively generic, probably six-page document, which describes what we would like to have in Building 2, Building 1, and Building 11. We would allow City Hall to just continue to be constructed as it is and just focus on those three buildings. So what are we dealing with? Trying to look at moving First Precinct and Police Admin into a renovated Building 2 on the first, second, and third floor. They're currently in 58,000 square feet. First, second, and third floor is 66,000 square feet, so we don't have a fit problem. Because of the New City Hall and our original configuration and a parking problem, we were building a new parking lot right next to the Building 2. One of the challenges with moving the Police Department to another building is parking. That's one of the reasons why this building is a challenge for moving a Police Department. All of the cruisers, all of the investigators' cars, all of the things that have to happen, well, we now have a parking lot. Under this concept, the data center would stay in Building 2, just the data center itself. We'd get it off the basement and bring it up. And we certainly would consider renaming the building into Building 531 in honor of the event that took place on that date. After we did that, Public Works and I.T. could move into a renovated Building 1. I could just as equally say Public Utilities and Planning could move into a renovated Building 1. The four departments that were displaced fit quite nicely into Building 1 and 11 in any combination. Don't have to decide that now. So don't get hung up in the, oh, I think it would be better if planning were in Building 1. We'll figure that out. All I'm saying to you is we, that's an option, and we have the space. So we would prepare these, really, six-page statement of work, put it out on the street. You get response anywhere from 30 to 45 days later, and it's a design build team comes in with a concept and qualifications, just like we did with the Sports Center. You negotiate, really, an interim agreement to progress design based on the firm you pick. Ultimately, you negotiate a guaranteed maximum price and contingencies with a selected team. You sign this comprehensive agreement, and you get to work. And we would do this in two phases, Building 2 first, with Building 1 and 11 to follow. And the new C.I.P. for City Hall is not altered and just proceeds as planned. Money, about 129 for this, Building 1 and Building 2. It's about the same interior space renovation, didn't get a whole lot more thought than that, but it's about the same cost for the two buildings. Building 1 has more demolition in it with the hazardous material than 2 does, but 2 has some data center issues, and so I wouldn't be surprised if those costs come out the same. Building 11 at 19 million, we've already talked about, and 50 million for the New City Hall is already approved and being spent. How quickly could you do it? Really, we could be out to market by the 1st of August. I mean, this is really just typing up six pages of documents for what you want in each, and it's literally, I want to house this department, and they need to have these features and be able to do these capabilities. It is not a design document, it's a listing of requirements. Based on that, we could receive PPA proposals on or about the 1st of October. We could select a team in December. We could be negotiating GMP and contingencies with a selected team by February, signing a comprehensive agreement by April, working by the 1st of May. Starting Building 2 by May of next year, finish that 18 months later in the summer, or a little more than 12 months later, summer of '21, moving Virginia Police, Virginia Beach Police Department into the fall of '21. So that just slid the Police Department up into a new building by four years. Building 1 and Building 11, you'd started in the fall of '21. Why? Well, if you move the police into 2 right in the fall of '21, it's exactly the same time as we're finishing City Hall and we're emptying this building out, and now I have Building 1 and Building 11 empty at the same time. So one big contract, just in two phases. Start that in the fall of '21, finish in the spring of '23, and then I could move Public Works, Public Utilities, I.T., and Planning in the summer of '23. And again, everybody's bedded down in a space by that summer. Funding, again, 50 million is currently authorized for the ongoing City Hall. We would need 30 million for this in fiscal year '20 for the budget that was just approved before the next budget cycle, and that presents some funding challenges. Just want to point out that nuance. Because we would be ready to sign a comprehensive agreement in this fiscal year, or the fiscal year starting July 1st, the funds for this would have to come out of existing sources. And then 49 million required in FY '21 for the last two renovations could be dealt with in the normal budget cycle. So pros and cons of this. Pros, prep of this requirements document is amazingly easy. A PPA of this magnitude brings a select group of designers and builders. Really, when you're talking, you know, you get up around 100 million or more, it is the more serious players in town, not that smaller projects don't bring people that are serious, but you have to be relatively robust in your ability to form a design-build team and take on the design aspect and the risk of doing this for dollars of that value. Selection is based on qualifications, not price. We get to see everybody's qualifications, we get to see their concepts, we pick who we want, then we negotiate price. It is very fast. It is very fast. The cons, when you only put out six pages of requirements documents, you don't have a lot of control of what you get. I mean, that's just a fact. You will try to work during the interim agreement with the designer to get most of what you want, but you'll never get the kind of control you have in a design-build package, or even design-build that I'll talk about in a second. And as a part of that, Police Departments and data centers sometimes require some specialized things that you want to be sure you're going to get. The price is fixed at the signing of the comprehensive agreement, and changes are hard to accommodate. Like any design-build contract, once you've agreed on price and the design isn't done every time you make a change, you've got to take something out to put something in. And it's very expensive. Option 3, sort of takes option 2 and makes it a little less risky. So, instead of putting together a six-page document, maybe we should spend some time and put together bridging documents for a single project for design-build. Again, same laydown, Police Precinct and Police Admin move into a renovated Building 2 for a second and third floor. Same timing, Public Works and IT into a renovated Building 1, and Public Utilities and Planning into a Building 11, or vice versa. Again, don't get hung up on that. In this case, you post a request for design-build proposals. You select a best-valued design-build team, where price is competitively included in that, and other technical factors are considered. You award a design-build contract, and you get to work. The timing is pretty much the same. I'll get to that in a second. The cost is a little more. It's the same cost for the work in Building 1, the work in Building 2, the work in Building 11. The new City Hall still goes on, but you do have to pay somebody money to prepare the design-build bridging documents. And I'll be frank, the 4 million for preparation of bridging documents is high. I was just putting a marker there. I think it's somewhere between 2 and 4 to get somebody to do another 150,000 square foot of bridging documents on three facilities, but that would be negotiated. I would tell you that, well, we'll get to the timing. Developing the bridging documents and solicit, I could get bridging documents done by next April. Really, I can do the same process. It's about 35% design, and I'm fortunate enough in that Mosley has already been working on programming in Building 11, and they've already been working with us on what to do with Building 1. And they know the departments very well, and could get this part done by April. Go out on the street and have RFP proposals back by June, award a design-build contract by July, get to work in August. It's really, it's the same sequence, although instead of finishing in the summer of '23, it finishes in the fall of '23. So, you lose about three months overall in the acquisition. CIP funding timing is a little better. Again, 50 million is already there. I would need 4 million in fiscal year '20, which is a whole lot less than the other option. I'll be honest, we had a CIP for 2 million and change to do electrical renovations in Building 2, which I have now canceled. So, I have that 2 million from previous fiscal years in cash, already there. So, for 2 million more in this fiscal year, I could get to the table and get moving forward. The 30 million in '21 for the renovation of Building 2 would become a fiscal year '21 budget issue, so we'd have the opportunity to talk about that in January, February, March, and come up with that money through the normal budget process. And then, 49 million for Buildings 11 and 1 would happen in '22. Again, same timing process. Pros on this, again, just like the PPA, projects of this magnitude bring a pretty select group of builders. It is a fast delivery method, not quite as fast as the PPA. Selection is based on qualifications and price, which means price was determined competitively. Cons, same thing, changes are hard with design-build, not nearly as hard as in a PPA. With 35% bridging documents, though, you really have put down, we have to have these things, and there's some very good detail that goes with it. I would say, again, as a con, though, the price is fixed at the signing of a design-build contract. Changes are hard to accommodate, simply because anything you put in means something comes out. Summary comparison, again, option 1, total package is 144 million and gets done in fall of '25. That 49 million in the middle is the cost of renovation of B1 and 11. You wouldn't necessarily need to do both of those, and so that 49 could be knocked down by either 19 or by 30 if you only wanted to renovate one of them. Option 2 and 3, very similar. Option 2 is the PPA that gets you done in the summer of '23 for 129 million, 50 million, which is the cost of the City Hall, which is sunk cost. Fall of '23 for option 3, it costs 4 million more on the outside for the design RFP, and a little more time to get that work done. Funding, not necessarily something we have to consider now, but it's something that we have to consider now. The general fund can pay for new construction or renovation of buildings, and the general fund pays debt service, and because Public Utilities is moving in, that enterprise fund could lease space back from us at all-inclusive rates. That's a funding option. Second is general fund and Public Utilities Enterprise each pay for their respective spaces. You know, if bonds are sold, each fund pays respective debt service. Each fund pays for respective custodial utilities and maintenance expected. Some of you may not know this, but Public Utilities rents space from me now. You know, the Public Utilities Enterprise pays the city for the space that they occupy in those services. So, this isn't anything new. And obviously, external funding sources could be explored for Building 2 renovations, whether there is a government agency at another level that might be interesting to help, interested in helping us pay for this, is something. But without question, if we were going to do any of these three options, we need to find a bill payer. Something needs to be canceled, some taxes have to go up, or something needs to be rearranged. It just doesn't come out of the woodwork. So, that's where I'm at. I realize with the limited time, there are a number of holes in this, and forgive me for not being as exact as I normally am on some of these things, but I hope I've shown you what could be done, really, how quickly it could be done, and the magnitude of challenge that we're facing from an execution and from a funding point of view to do it.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
John.
Just two, because I think there's a lot more that has to follow. One, it would be nice, when you're looking at this, which is good for briefing, when you're trying to compare all the options, you're flipping back and forth. We could get a matrix, even if it was 11 by 17 paper, it'd be easiest to see it on one page, where you can compare the numbers. Here, you're flipping back and forth, it's just hard. But for a brief, it's great, but for trying to compare, it's difficult. And I'm sure this will come up, but I know we had the chart showing where we were with our bond to debt and our operating relative to our various debt policies. So, it would be interesting to see where this debt issuance is, where, because I know, I think it was in '22 and '23, we're at 9.9% of the 10% cap in those two years, if I remember that chart correctly, and we're borrowing money and interest payments in those years. So, it'd be great if we could see that chart to see how this cash flow influences that. And to you, and to my peers, Mr. Mayor, I think this is so, I think we will be looking at the CIP, but I think, given the fundamental part of this, this would be one of those ideas to do and discuss in advance of the budget submission on 31 March, and not try to do it in April, because this is so fundamentally moving a lot of pieces. I would like to find a way that we could come to a consensus on the CIP arrangement, so we're not trying to do it in 30 days, and that puts us under a lot of pressure. I'd just like to do that in advance of the manager presenting his budget, so we all agree what we're going to get, and we can talk to the public about why.
Yeah, I think that's a good point to be taken, and I think we have a lot of challenges ahead of us that are going to be worthy of discussion. Thank you. Barbara.
I suppose that the first question, it is the basic question of whether we just moved forward with the City Hall as we had planned or not, because I suppose we were really, as of May 30th, we were, I think we had a notice to proceed date of early July. So, I guess that's a fundamental, basic thing that we decide first, and then we do the other.
Correct.
But I would think that that's kind of a first step. But then, and I know you indicated this is a first step, and there's a lot more discussion to come, but I hope that we're going to have opportunity for employee input, and particularly those folks who are most impacted, because, you know, it's all been sort of, I think nobody ever thought of Building 2 until now, and now, you know, it's really the height, particularly those, that question, I hope there's a good opportunity for them to give their input early on.
So, if I might...
Noted. Mr. Anderson.
If I might respond. So, we have five years invested. Certainly, a year in advance of my becoming the city manager, discussions took place about what the condition of this building was, and what the requirements are. Huge space analysis, you know, our footprint for the city was not, does not support 2020 government. The new City Hall provides that capacity. We built in the ability to provide sufficiency of government services going forward. We're ready to issue that notice to proceed. A lot of negotiations gone on, not only with you all, but in deciding where you wanted to build your new City Hall, but in getting this design done, getting this contract on the street, getting the proposals in, the evaluation. We're ready to issue a notice to proceed. Consolidating in one building, it's there because if we decided you wanted to demo Building 2, which, you know, it's worth $20 million as an empty shell in the facility itself, the architecture invested there, the HVAC system that's in there, the electronics and the IT that's there. It's not asbestos-encased like this building. You do not want to demo that. So, the first option was proposed because that discussion's out there. I just don't think the public understands the value of that structure over there. It is a mammoth building. And so, it is not the recommendation of staff, me being staff, and all those guys working diligently to produce this briefing for you all and the public that's watching this, the course of action 1 makes sense. Consolidating all your assets in a single building is also a risk. I would defer to anybody on council wants to jump on that. I think you understand that. I think having a triumvirate, now a, I don't know, what's a quad, quadplex with four buildings gives you a great municipal center. It was the intent that you had when you decided not to take City Hall to the Central Business District, and so we had a healthy plan working. We just got a much healthier plan that we got to develop. We certainly know that Building 1 and public safety needs to be renovated. And so, the recommendation of option 1 is not the right answer. So, that now takes us to options 2 and 3. I do believe that our staff is going to overcome this event. They will adapt, but there are scars. You have an open wound, and I heard a presentation happened to be just down the street at Piney Grove for one of the memorials, and one of the very eloquent preachers that got up there talked about, you know, we're dealing with an open wound that will become a scar, and that scar will never go away. And so, ensuring that the occupants of Building 2 are different. And our Police Department works in Building 11, First Precinct, our Police Headquarters. They are packed in there, and not many of you have had an opportunity to go through that building. I'm happy to get the chief or deputy city manager for public safety chief cover to take you through there, but that building needs a renovation. And so, putting the Police Department and the First Precinct and all the expansive opportunity for public safety in that, in Building 2, redesignating it to Building 531, demolishing, demoing the inside of the floors, because footprints do not match, realigning the IT and the phones and all the technology necessary to support them, and the divisions that police and the First Precinct have, provides an opportunity to have a wake and to put to rest Building 2. And the next morning, coming to work and having a sunrise service, and re-designating it as Building 531, and going to work with the architect design to relay that out. So, I think you're at options 2 and options 3, and you just have to decide how much control you want. This council's had a propensity to want to have a little more control. So, I would urge you to look at option 2 and move into a 30% design, even maybe back it off 25% design, if that saves us a month, and to move forward with that. And give me an opportunity to come back to you in two weeks and lay out of the financial concepts of what our bond capacity is, what other CIPs we might be foregoing or pushing out, and where I can find bill payers in the current CIP to move in that direction, and then give you an opportunity to think about the financing scheme. The difference is 3 or 4 million dollars, plus or minus, their swags, they're doing the best they can. I would hope they are top of the range swag, so that we can, and I think that's what Tom's done for you. We've learned a lot in bidding lately and how expensive it is, so he's applied all those current costs out there. And so, I would encourage you, in answer to your question in a very roundabout way, Ms. Henley, stay in the saddle, award the new City Hall, and move diligently forward with a plan to incorporate three building renovations that changes where everybody currently located today, and puts them in new digs so that we can go forward for the next 50 to 75 years.
Mr. Wood.
Thanks. You know, I agree with much of what the manager said, and we have to think about the fact that something catastrophic could take out a building, and if everything is in one building, that's bad. I mean, this is just easily, it could have been a fire, it could have been a hurricane, tornado, anything that they could have done that, and we would be, you know, out of the building as well. So, I like the concept of diversifying a little bit, and I think it probably makes it a little bit more personal for people when they're not coming into some monolithic building to try to figure out where things go. I know when I've done some construction work up in Northern Virginia, if you go to, like, Fairfax County's government building, it looks like our town center. It's, you know, gigantic buildings, and it's kind of hard to figure out where you go for permits and things like that. You know, I think option 3 is probably my best way to do it, you know, a design-build thing. The only thing I'd like to see is I just, I'm struggling with why it would take all the way till April of next year to come up with bridging documents. You know, I had the opportunity to talk to the code official over here today, and she described it. I know you said it took a week for them to do their plans, and she basically said it was like two meetings that they did. So, it was probably a week of everything, but, you know, getting it all done. So, I think, I feel certain that there are people in these various organizations, certainly in the Police Department, that could focus on this right now, figure out what they need to do. And I'd like to see it move a little bit quicker, because we need to get things moved back there. I think we need to absolutely save the building, but it needs to be completely gutted and renovated. So, I'd like to see us do an enhanced option 3, if that's a term there.
Okay, John Moss.
I just wanted to make sure, when we look at the debt service costing, that we capture the basis points differential between PPEA issued bonds and bonds issued directly by the city. We get our lowest cost when we issue general obligation bonds, so I want to make sure that we fully know what our GOB capacity, both used, that's available, which I know you'll look at, but also what's available that we haven't used, so that we reduce our interest costs, and that may well reduce the price differential between 2 and 3. I'm kind of like Councilman Wood, kind of biased to 3, but until you see the numbers, I'm always open-minded. But I do agree with your assessment about, because I shared with you in an email earlier, that staying with Building 1, even though it's not a building I supported, events have changed, and you've got to adapt with the times, that it is the right course to proceed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Henley.
Just some other comments that are just out there. I know that when we were going through the design of the new City Hall building, that one of the issues that we spent a lot of time on with the consultants was the security issue, and how the arrangement would be done, if it would allow security. Of course, at that time, we were thinking of external security, but I think in all of this process, it certainly raises that whole issue to another level. But in doing all of these buildings and in addressing new facilities for all of these departments, which are the ones that the public... these departments, which are the ones that the public accesses the most, that'll be a very major part of it. But I, I think that's also an opportunity for our, our employees to have a lot of input and, and so forth. But I'm assuming that if we're going to be taking all of these buildings, we're going to be having four new buildings, goodness, at one time, that, that we'll be able to address all of those things very aggressively.
Yeah. Mr. Moss and Mr. Hanson.
On that point, I sent an email while we were talking to Mr. Hanson, talking about things we probably need to reconsider, just from a scaling point of view, looking forward to the future, and probably it's worthwhile in a different environment where we can have those. And we can talk about security of building in the executive session, that's probably the right place. But I did, far from your point, point out that there are some, even if you don't do it now, the scaling to be able to do that needs to be considered while you're building it, so it's not having to go in there and cut stuff up and tear walls apart, that you've got the interfaces that allow for the power and the fiber and the video and the metal detectors or whatever, that you've got that built in, because you are correct. Time to do it is when you're building, even if you don't do it right then.
Mr. Hanson.
I was just gonna let Tom give you his thoughts on the amount of effort put into security for the design of that building, because we did put a lot of effort into it.
Right. So, you know, certainly from, the building was set up to resist certain aggression from external threats, the, the, the way the building is laid out, the setback of the building from parking, bollards that keep buildings from crashing, your vehicles from crashing into doors, those types of things. There's also a good bit of surveillance in the building, in the new City Hall. Again, please understand, anytime you put in a surveillance system, you have to provide some sort of reaction force. It, it's, it's a little callous to say, but if you have surveillance footage and no reaction force, you have film for the trial. So, we have, in the new City Hall, there, there are spaces where, on certain occasions, we can have public safety and/or sheriff's deputies monitoring screens, watching the video in real time, capable of responding, maybe not 24/7, but at, at times of our choosing, so that, that video security becomes something that is real time. We also went to extreme effort to separate employee movement from public movement. There are interface points, but the entrances are separate. The flow patterns of the employees versus the flow patterns of the public are different, as are the exits. And, and then there's a, there's quite a number of security features that we talked about with you in, in executive session, about the council chambers itself, and, and the way that that is enhanced force protection for both the public and for the council members. And, and so, I, I'm, it's nice that we would continue with a design build RFP with Mosley, because Mosley went through that with us all. We, we just had all of those discussions. We know what all the options are, and, and I can't imagine that we would begin to renovate those three buildings without putting the majority of those features into it, and perhaps some unique ones for the police department, police admin, First Precinct. But without question, that would be a major portion of the renovation, is considering people flow, barriers, observation video, and, and response features.
Okay. Anybody else?
You know, I just want to thank you all. Without question, we have some logistical challenges that I think staff has stepped forward with in a very big way. And I think incorporating the safety designs in future buildings and everything will go a long way to restore confidence of the employees and the public, you know, that we are still and always will be the safest city of a city our size. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Lot of work to produce this today. So, Mayor, Members of Council, we're now going to have the city auditor come in, and we're going to have a briefing on our audit results for the Community Development Corporation. This is, this is a briefing that you've already received in executive session, and now that we have both, we have the board here to also follow up with a management response to Lyndon's audit, and then we have our, I assume Deputy City Manager Ron Williams or Andy Friedman to give city staff response to. It's, and, and so with that as a preview, and as we're setting up, I'm going to hand this over to you, Mr. Moss, and as our liaison to, because you've been shepherding this for quite some time.
Well, Mike and I both met with Ron and Barry last week, you know, to go over the staff's recommendations. We went over, of course, we'd seen the audit, plus what the board also shared with us. One of the first things I want to, I want to say out the front is that there are a lot of great employees, and there's obviously some things that went awry, but I think it's the employees pointed them out, and I think the atmosphere didn't get those things visible to the larger public, and certainly not to the board members themselves, or the advisors or liaisons. I think I shared with you upfront early on when I got on the board that there was some cash flow issues with the board, with the organization, and they had a balloon payment due out in the future that gave me great concern. I'd like to say with our new, with the new leadership of the organization and some engagement by the board as well, you're going to hear today a little bit about how we, it's not a certain path. There's still some risk in the path ahead, but they certainly have trimmed their costs where they could, and, and they're trying to get themselves in a position downstream when that note comes due, that they have a viable cash flow that would put them in the marketplace to be able to refinance that debt. I think that's all a common goal we have. I think they're going to share with you a little bit, they have some things. The strategy that we've asked them to pursue to maintain the 413, maybe a little more than that, units that they hold does present them some revenue and expense challenges, which the board is going to look at how we develop maintenance, because long-term, there's not a lot of opportunities to acquire land and build affordable housing. So, I think that's some homework that the board and the liaisons have to do, is even if we get, when we get our cash flow right and our rent collections are right, there's still challenges about what we as a council want them to do in terms of expanding affordable housing, because I think absent, this is just my personal opinion, and Mike certainly entitled it with the board, is absent getting the land that we still have in our inventory and seeing how we can make that kind of land available. The prices of land in Hampton and Virginia Beach that are available will make expanding affordable housing very difficult on an acquisition basis. I don't think I'm being unfair or alarmist in saying that, but I think you're going to hear today that they know they have problems. They're going to tell you how they plan to fix it, and we just need to get them some new board members appointed. You can imagine how difficult it is to find people who want to join in and serve on a board when they're uncertain as to its status. That's the nicest way I think of saying that. But I'm going to still go out there. I know Mike's going to help me as well to get some more board members so they can meet a quorum. But I've been very pleased with the response of the board and the staff relative to the recommendations and the findings of the audit. And I very much appreciate Barry and Ron's help trying to get a path to success, so that when those, when that note comes due, we'll be in a cash flow position to refinance, and we won't be looking for any kind of additional support from the taxpayers. That's, that's our goal, and I think that's the goal I got, direction I got from this body, is to pursue that, and that's what we've achieved. With that, Mr. Hanson, it's over to you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, also as a liaison to the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, I would also like to make a comment and start by saying that I am committed to the mission of the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, that I respect and admire the individuals and the staff who work there to serve that mission every single day. I respect, admire, and appreciate the board members who volunteer their time to commit themselves to the cause of affordable housing. Many of those board members are here today, have joined us, and I believe that it's a reflection, it's a demonstration of their commitment, which I'm deeply grateful for. Most of the board members are new to the, to the Community Development Corporation, and I think that's an important point and distinction to make, because they are here, they are committed to helping us to solve this issue that you will hear about in a moment. And I would also like to thank the city auditor and, and his team for bringing this information about the Community Development Corporation that we're about to hear into the light. It's because the work that happens at the VB CDC is very important to the cultural, to the social health of our city, and what we need to do, all of us, everyone in this room and anyone who has an association with the CDC, is commit ourselves to help the organization get stable and to rebuild, because the work that happens at the CDC is one component of a larger structure that exists within our city to offer opportunity to anyone in Virginia Beach who wants it. Affordable housing opportunities. People can find success here. People can enhance the quality of their lives and the lives of their families if they have access to good housing and affordable housing. It's critically important to the health. So, I would like to join Councilmember Moss and, and the board members who are here and the staff of CDC to committing ourselves to supporting this organization, to rebuild and get back, get back on track and to be stable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
So, I'll turn it over to Lyndon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you for having me here today to present the results of the audit. Just a real quick couple of introductions. First of all, from my staff, Tony Gonzalez, who's the senior auditor on, on this audit. We also have the interim president and CEO from the VB CDC, Jessica Guglielmo, I hope I didn't butcher that, the CFO, Kim Johnson. We also have from staff, Ashley Jarvis. We do have your, three of your appointed, I believe three of your appointed board members from the CDC, Chris Brown. Chris, we have Robert Yule, as well as Jeremy Johnson. So, I appreciate everybody for being there. All right. So, just, one of the things we've, we've talked about, and again, this was in your packet, you have the full report, and for the public that wants to obtain the full report, the full report is on our website, vbgov.com/cityauditor. So, we had, we were down to nine when I last spoke. When we met with the board, we had a board member resign the very next day, so currently we are at eight. So, as Councilmember Moss has mentioned, it would be nice to get back to full 11, so there isn't any issues in regards to getting a quorum, okay? I introduced the executive team during the audit. As I mentioned, Eddie Wright Thomason was the CEO. She resigned. We have the liaisons, Councilman Moss and Councilman Berluci. Ron Williams is the deputy city manager, and we have Andy Friedman, who's here from city staff, all right? And I won't go over every slide because you do, I won't go over every point in the slide because you do have this, but we started off December 7th. We had, you know, a little bit of pushback to start with, but we got the audit going on officially January 28th. We met with the executive management team on April 22nd, just to kind of give them a briefing of the steps going forward. April 24th, council received the email that the CEO resigned. May 20th, after, a little over a month after that, we had our exit conference, and we briefed the board. They had their own briefing on the 22nd, and we're here today to brief the board, I mean, brief the council as well as the public on the results of the audit. All right. Just a brief history again, won't go over everything, but VB CDC is a 501(c)(3). It was created by the council, okay, with the goal of helping to provide affordable housing, various options within the city, okay? Since it's a 501(c)(3), why are we involved, all right? We're involved because the VB CDC is a component unit. It is reflected, their financials are included in the city's CAFR, and why is that? Is because we, the council, appoints their board, and because they appoint their board, they're considered a component unit, because the council can, the financial word, is impose their will on the organization, okay? It's about 443 units totaling $26.8 million in property value. I would say, I'm, I'm pretty sure all of that is exempt from property taxes. There's about $19.7 million of long-term debt. 5.2 of long-term debt relates to the Grand Cypress Apartments, which Mr. Moss alluded to earlier. We have about 31 FTEs and an annual budget about $5.4 million, okay? In regards to the second piece that is related and significant to the VB CDC is a separate 501(c)(3), and it's now named Second Act Communities, okay? Second Act was originally established, again, with the assistance of the city, so that it could qualify for some of the federal home program funding, and it's referred to as a CHODO. So, if you hear that acronym, CHODO, that's the Community Housing Development Organization. So, it was created separately so that the city could avail and receive those funds, okay? In July 2016, Second Act, or SAC, officially separated from the VB CDC at the initiative of the CEO at that time, in order to, they believed to fully comply with CHODO, and then that also afforded Second Act to pursue development opportunities outside of the city of Virginia Beach. So, it's kind of twofold in regards to why they needed a second 501(c)(3), okay? They felt that by providing the opportunity to go outside of Virginia Beach, it could potentially open up additional revenue streams. SAC is governed by its own board and managed by VB CDC executives, and we're going to get into some of the conflict that creates, who basically hold the same positions in both organizations, all right? So, when we did the audit, we, we pretty much based it off the VB CDC goals that were established by management along with the board. So, we looked at, are they remaining financially sustainable? Are they able to serve more neighbors in new ways? And are they able to attract and retain the best and the brightest talent? Okay? What did we find in regards to the first objective, remaining financially stable, okay? As Mr. Moss has, has mentioned and brought to you, having attended some of the board meetings, the financial losses are mounting, okay? And the, these figures are audited figures, so it's not our figures, it's from the external auditors that audit the VB CDC, okay? And this does include depreciation, but this is straight from their financials. So, you can see the, the net position at the end of the year, the operating income is currently at 1.5 million. They're probably be around that figure when the 19 numbers comes in. The net position, as you can see, went from 14.4 million down to 11.1 million. So, the financial losses are mounting over the last three years. The CPA firm did mention at the board meeting that to be, be aware of the cash flow and the financial position to keep the organizational, to keep the organization operational, okay? So, I don't want to come up here and try to be alarmist and alarm anyone, but that's coming straight from the external auditors, okay? All right. We also looked at the line of credit. So, to finance some of the normal operations, the funds generally reserved for the housing development opportunities, right? They took out a line of credit of, I believe, 1.8 million to have as a resource when they want to pursue housing, projects, and so forth, okay? So, because of the losses, they have tapped into the line of credit to fund operations, and that has continued to increase. So, of the 1.8 million, we are, during the audit, we're up to about 1.5 million utilized of the line of credit, okay? So, obviously, if you're using the line of credit to help augment some of the operations, then it's not available to you to pursue opportunities. But some of the other financial concerns that we, we had, it's spelled out in detail in the report, but I'll just point out some of them. Prior year retained earnings of 343,000 were depleted. We have had to resort to selling seven revenue-producing assets. I believe one is under contract, if that has not been sold. You know, we had some concern that- You know, we had some concern that they did provide a grant in the financial position they were at, they still provided a grant to Second Act. The loan, as Mr. Moss mentioned earlier, is going to mature soon, so that has to be refinanced. 5.2 million dollar note, 2.2 million in 2021, and two, 3.2 million in 2022. So that is something that is, needs to be addressed. Some of the other financial concerns, just from an operational standpoint, some are more significant than others. They tried to fundraise an event, they, they thought they were going to, and they budgeted for 250,000, they actually lost 46,000. Planning for the spot, which took about two years and resulted in taking a revenue-producing property off the market, was only in operation for seven months before it was, was taken, taken down. We had at least 20 violations of the travel reimbursement policy. We had some issues with the, with the use of the credit card as well as supporting documentation for those related expenses, okay? Still under, remain financially stable, and I know some of this is being addressed currently, and Jessica will, will get into this when she comes up here, but during the audit, we just, we asked about some of the plans in place to address the financial losses. So at that time, there was no plans that they could provide us, okay? Related to new development acquisitions, methods to increase grants, increasing the turnaround rate of rental properties, addressing some of the staffing requirements and expenses, and effectively reducing overall operating expenses, okay? All right, and this slide just gets into details of some of the, the issues and concerns that I have already previously highlighted, all right? Some other issues, just basic internal controls over the storeroom, enhancing or, and/or developing code of conduct policy, replacement reserve policy. All right, moving on to their second initiative, which was to serve more neighbors. So we wanted to review that, and the, so finding four was unable to develop or acquire properties. So as you can see, within the last, for fiscal year 16 and 18, there was one acquisition of an apartment complex, and that did yield 55 units in the Grand Cypress Apartment. But as of the audit, there were no new housing developments, and there were no new acquisitions of the scattered site, okay? So 55 units resulted, basically, that was 12% of the organization's goals of 450, okay? All right, another finding, finding five under serving more neighbors, the inability to maintain the current housing stock. So we took a sample, we didn't look at all of them, but we took a sample of some of the inspections. So in 2018, 75% of the properties inspected by the city housing code inspectors failed initial inspection, okay? And the spectrum of the violation, you know, runs the gamut, from very, very minor, you know, to something more significant. So it isn't anything where it was significant and to not allow people to actually reside in those properties. When they went back for a reinspection, 22% that were eventually reinspected failed the reinspection, and at the time of the audit, only 85, 85% had not been rescheduled. And that's due to timing, due to resources both from the city side housing as well as the VB-CDC staff, all right? Finding six, under serving more neighbors, questionable management decisions to outsource the facilities maintenance team. Obviously, when you have housing stock that's flipping over, that has, that's aging, one of the core services is having a strong maintenance team so you can turn around the properties, you can address any city violations timely, okay? VB-CDC dissolved the facilities team in 2015. That was a management decision, because they wanted to outsource a core service, okay? However, that failed, okay? So outsourcing arrangement lasted only eight months before they had to try to bring it back in, okay? Lasted only eight months. So the facilities team's current staffing of six maintenance technician is now smaller than its former size of nine with the same amount of properties, okay? This may have had, you know, something to do with their high rate of property inspection failure. All right, finding seven, we also noted that the VB-CDC discontinued several programs which ended up leading to loss of revenues. So they decided to discontinue the relationship with the city and the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, the homeowner rehab program, as well as the transition housing program. And that was 148,000 and 392,000 respectively, okay? So when you're looking for revenue streams, I'm not sure if it's the best idea to, to cut out those types of grants. All right, finding eight, and I, and I did brief the council and as, as well as the board, we did notice a pattern of the CEO absence, and this came through us several ways from a confidential survey as well as interviews that we conducted. CEO was frequently away from the office. Some of the reasons stayed for the absences were attendance at conferences, out-of-state meetings, working from home, taking comp time, various reasons. These were some of the examples that, where we questioned it, okay? So obviously, you know, we all attend various types of trainings, and that's justifiable, but these were just some of the examples where we did note where the proper documentation to support the travel or being away were not there, okay? And that was further substantiated by input we've gotten from the surveys. I don't necessarily need to, to get into some of those reasons, okay? As I mentioned, I think this was a significant event during the audit, so that's why we included it. During the audit, the CEO resigned, and we do have an interim CE, CEO, all right? All right, so under attracting and retaining the best and the brightest talent for staff, again, just looking at consultants, the staff we're using. Finding number nine, we had an issue procurement process not followed in the hiring of consultants, okay? It wasn't an issue that they hired consultants. The issue was there is a procurement process when it reaches certain thresholds, okay? So we had someone, they hired a consultant from IT procurement, someone to procure an update to policy, a graphic designer for events, HR, and various consulting work that These consultants were hired, they all happened to be based in Chicago, and the, I don't think it's a coincidence that the former CEO had a position in Chicago prior to coming to Virginia Beach, okay? Finding 10, use of the remote employees, and I do believe, and Jessica can address, address this, because I do believe some of these positions during the budget process have been eliminated, but the executive assistant was working remotely from Atlanta, Georgia, okay, full-time. Their HR director was working from Chicago during the period of August 2015 to August 2018, okay? And because she was remote, we calculated the expenses, and on top of the, the salary was 235,000, okay, so it was $235,000 compensation. And then on top of that, the travel cost to come in from Chicago to Virginia Beach at a minimum of once a quarter. Okay, we talked about the board and how vital a board is to any nonprofit organization, okay? There's no exception to the CDC. So the low board makeup attendance has adversely impacted the necessary oversight because ultimately you have a board, an appointed board, to provide that governance and that oversight. A fully staffed board is 11. We're down to eight, as you can see on the chart. It was closer to six on average, okay? And then they brought it to our attention, not only that did they have difficulties getting a quorum, that the council liaisons were not always in attendance as well, okay? All right, then we also looked at the relationships between the VB-CDC and the Second Act. So we meant, as I mentioned, they're two separate organizations, two separate 501(c)(3). Second Act, CHODO, is in place to receive CHODO funding, and then the ability to be able to go outside, right? It was the goal of the CEO to go outside. As a matter of fact, if you look at some of their organizing documents, not only go outside the Hampton Roads area, but nationwide, okay? It was a very, you know, she was dreaming big, but in reality, that shared services agreement between the VB-CDC and SAC, it proved to be a big detriment for the VB-CDC, okay? Some of the issues we noted, there was a conflict of interest. As we mentioned, the CEO, the COO, the CFO held the same positions, and they made the decisions for both organizations, okay? They did the, they did the accounting, you know, a lot of the back office because Second Act did not have staff. They do not have staff, okay? So we did a lot of, VB-CDC did a lot of the, the back office functions, and for some of those services, they were charging them a fee in interest, which they no longer are doing, okay? As we mentioned, the VB, SAC currently owes VB-CDC 424,000 for some of the previous services, and that's not even including the, the grant that was just outright giving, given to Second Act, okay? As I mentioned, the conflict of interest between the VB-CDC and SAC, did you know, in this one, we tried to wrap our, our arms around, but management received a stipend from SAC that, it wasn't a big stipend, but they did receive a stipend that amounts to approximately 5% of their VB-CDC salaries, okay? But since they're already full-time employees, any compensation, you know, received was just on top of their, their salary, for in essence, just performing the services they were hired to perform, okay? And again, some other, other issues we found that we questioned and was a detriment to the VB-CDC, the SAC board, there wasn't communication between the SAC board and the VB-CDC board. The SAC board actually granted the VB-CDC CEO, who is an employee of VB-CDC, 40 hours of annual leave, okay? The board was not notified about this, nor did they vote or agree to that, okay? VB-CDC is the employer of record and is such the only authority that can grant any form of additional benefits. When we looked at the shared, when we looked at the shared services agreement, there really isn't a requirement for SAC to share the development fees. And we, as I stated earlier, they were initially created to be a CHODO, to avail VB-CDC to those CHODO funds. Well, over the last three years, they have not qualified for any CHODO funding, okay? All right? So as I mentioned, no requirement for SAC to share development fees. They haven't received any CHODO funding for the last three years, okay? All right, so that brings us to the end. And as I mentioned, the entire report is on vbgov.com/cityauditor. But we determined that VB-CDC is currently facing severe financial challenges, has not been able to meet its goal of serving more individuals, and is having challenges retained in both staff and board members. Without remediating the findings noted in this audit, the sustainability and viability could adversely be impacted, okay? So before I bring up Chris to represent the board and say a few words before we bring up, Jessica, does anybody have any comments or questions?
I want, I want, because he mentioned about the assets of the organization, net of depreciation. I just want the council to know that the real estate assessment value of those properties, which is not the tax thing of depreciation, is $35 million.
Yes.
That is tax exempt. So there's a big difference between the accounting, which is net of depreciation.
Yes.
And what the assessor believes the market value of the properties are. I just want to make sure that people knew that, that it's, that is their biggest asset since a, a good percentage, I think, of that property is debt-free.
Yes.
So I just want people to put that in context, just to have that background. Anybody else? Lyndon, quick question. How long have you been with the city right now?
2000, in, May 2008. So a little over 11 years.
Yeah, but I just wanted to point out that, you know, since Mr. Ramirez came on board, you know, we're not afraid to bring up things that don't necessarily put us in a light. We have been fully transparent with a number of type of studies, and I hope this did help instill confidence in the public that we are a transparent organization, that, you know, this is not some of the best results that we want to see in any association associated with the city, but the fact that we bring it forward and get it remedied, I think bodes very well for us. I just wanted to thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, I'm going to bring up Chris Brown. He is a member of the board.
Before Chris speaks. When I pointed Mr. Brown, one of the reasons why I pointed Chris to the board was because he's in the rental market, both finding places for people to buy to rent, plus turning houses so he can rent them, and also rental management. So I thought, you know, there's a person who knows what the marketplace is, what the demand is, and knows what it takes to run a property. And I really do appreciate his willingness to serve and be here today, and I know he's worked hard with the other board members that are here to help us get on the right track, and I really do appreciate it because this is truly a public service. You have to have a passion for this, or you, you wouldn't be able to hang in there. So Chris, thank you very much for serving.
Well, Mr. Moss, thank you. Thank you after, good afternoon. Thank you very much, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Woods, and council. My name is Chris Brown. I'm a director on the VB-CDC board, and we are very appreciative of this city auditor's report, and auditor Ramirez did a great job, and we agree with his team's recommendations. And the board is taking immediate steps to comply with these recommendations, and we do look forward to our continued partnership with the city. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce our interim president and CEO, Ms. Jessica Gugliago. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay. I see it. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. As Chris mentioned, I'm Jessica Gugliamo, and I'm the interim president and chief executive officer for Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation. And I have been with the organization for 25 years and been through two leadership transitions. I'm very vested in ensuring that we have a positive outcome and a sustainable organization in partnership with the city. And I appreciate the opportunity today to review with you our response to the city auditor's report. I want to thank Lyndon and especially Antonio Gonzalez, who was very professional and courteous and worked alongside our team for the better part of about two to three weeks. So thank you. When VB-CDC was created by the city council in 1985, we were charged with providing affordable housing opportunities for low and moderate income individuals and families and assisting the city in revitalizing neighborhoods. Today, VB-CDC owns and operates Today, VB CDC owns and operates 462 units of scattered site housing in many different neighborhoods across the city that serve low and moderate income individuals and families, homeless and low resource families, persons with disabilities, and homeless and disabled veterans. VB CDC is an award-winning nonprofit organization and is a leader in the region, serving vulnerable veterans by providing critical supportive and financial services. We serve approximately 1,000 persons per year through our attainable housing and supportive services programs. And currently, the assessed value of our properties is $49 million. And that, Mr. Moss, includes the tax credit properties as well.
Okay, thank you.
And the board for the upcoming year approved a budget of $5.4 million. The VB CDC board and our management team is in agreement with the auditor's recommendations, and we have outlined corrective action steps to address the findings. I'm working on a detailed action plan with timelines together with Andy from the Housing Department, which will be presented to our VB CDC board for their review. I would like to highlight a few of those corrective actions. Findings one and two relate to the financial issues. VB CDC has taken immediate action to stop and ultimately reverse the operating loss trend. VB CDC receives revenue from its rental properties, grants, and also successful acquisition of revenue-producing properties. And we are seeking to increase revenue in all three of those areas. Our board of directors passed an operating budget for the upcoming year with a surplus of $118,000 for fiscal year 1920, and that represents a net turnaround of approximately $300,000 based on current projections. Effective July 1 of last year, VB CDC no longer advanced funds to Second Act communities for development, and any expenses that were incurred by Second Act communities were paid directly by Second Act communities. We have also eliminated all nonessential positions and redirected personnel for the upcoming year to our asset management. We also have eliminated all nonessential spending, including travel, events, and unfunded programs. We recognize that our core business is asset management, and any available resources will be directed to ensure adequate staffing, to maintain the properties, and maximize our rent potential. We're also pursuing grant opportunities that align with our mission and which have a positive financial impact on the organization. Finding three relates to internal controls and corporate policies which need to be updated or enhanced. Our board of directors will review and update the code of conduct, and staff will be trained on the new policy. VB CDC is in compliance with our replacement reserve policy, which was created in collaboration with the city's finance director back in 2004. We will revisit that policy in collaboration with the city's finance director and make any needed revisions. And VB CDC does have an inventory control procedure for its maintenance and facility supplies. The director of asset management is directly responsible to the CEO for that inventory control. The policy requires our facility's staff to itemize supplies received from the storeroom on an inventory control sheet, which is to be submitted bi-weekly to the supervisor for review and for matching up with the work orders that were completed during that time. The policy also requires that staff from outside that department, who are not involved in using or ordering of supplies, conduct account on a semi-annual basis. Since this audit, staff have been trained, and all facility staff and supervisors are clear about the policy, and they are maintaining compliance starting immediately. Finding four relates to the inability to develop or acquire properties. This finding is being immediately addressed. VB CDC is currently exploring a potential acquisition of a 24-unit small multifamily apartment complex in the city of Virginia Beach in collaboration with the city's housing department. This was a property that was referred to us from Dave Hansen, our city manager. Most recently, in December of 2016, we did purchase Grand Cypress Apartments, which preserved 55 units of workforce housing. And just last year, we submitted a bid to purchase 600 units at Baker Crossing. However, we were outbid. We will continue to explore opportunities to acquire and develop attainable housing in the city. Finding five relates to the inability to maintain the current housing stock. VB CDC has and is actively cooperating with the city's Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Code Enforcement Division to identify and correct any current maintenance violations. The majority of the violations cited were maintenance items and were not health or safety violations. It's critical that we invest in the asset management department as resources become available, and they will be invested to grow the staff, which will better equip us to turn our units faster and allow us to perform needed preventative maintenance and increase our response rate for maintenance items and violations. And also, VB CDC is very pleased to be the recipient of home funds for this upcoming fiscal year for the rehabilitation of the 10 units at Beach Park Apartments that serve folks with mental illness disabilities. The rehab funding will be used to replace major systems in need of modernization and upgrades. Finding six relates to outsourcing of the facility's maintenance team. VB CDC did reestablish its facilities, maintenance, and property management functions in 2016, and our focus is on rebuilding and strengthening that team. We have no plans to outsource this function. Finding seven relates to discontinuation of programs which led to lost revenue. VB CDC currently provides critical supportive and financial assistance to vulnerable and homeless veterans through our Support Services for Veterans Families program, our Veterans First program, and our New Haven program. VB CDC is looking for ways to continue to fulfill our mission through the creation of affordable housing opportunities that align with the city. We have no plans to discontinue any of these programs. Cost-benefit analyses will be completed to support decision-making prior to new program implementation or discontinuation, and these analyses will be presented to our board of directors for review and approval. Finding eight relates to the absences of the CEO. The VB CDC board of directors has taken immediate steps to monitor its executive team's performance and compliance with policies on a quarterly basis. This will happen through its personnel committee. Management will also review current personnel policies and will make changes where needed to strengthen policies and approve them in accordance with best practices and the auditor's recommendations. Training will be provided to staff on any changes in the policy. Finding nine relates to the procurement processes not being followed when hiring consultants from Chicago. VB CDC will review our procurement procedures and other board-approved policies governing spending thresholds, and will make changes as needed to comply with the recommendations. And then staff, of course, will receive training on the new policies and/or policy changes. Finding 10 is related to the remote employees. This upcoming fiscal year's budget eliminates all remote employees. Finding 11 is related to low board makeup or an attendance which has adversely affected oversight. VB CDC's board and management are committed to our mission and the partnership that we have with the city of Virginia Beach. And we look forward to continuing to provide attainable housing in partnership with the city. We are in need of three additional board members to have a full board in accordance with our bylaws. And additionally, our board will immediately strengthen its orientation and onboarding program and proactively seek out opportunities for board development. Findings 12, 13, 14, and 15 relate to the relationship and structure of Second Act communities, which was created by VB CDC and the city. VB CDC board is in agreement that the executives may not serve as executives with the existing relationship and structure, and we're immediately working in collaboration with the city's housing department and the Second Act Communities Board to eliminate that conflict and to make recommendations to both boards regarding the future of the organization. And VB CDC is willing to come back at the council's request to report on progress. I want to end this presentation by letting you know that VB CDC has a really dedicated staff and a really talented staff, and we are all dedicated to our mission, and we all look forward to continuing to serve the city in ways that align with the city. I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Boss. Thank you. You have done a great job. This shows you what change in leadership that's focused on the organization can accomplish, and thank you very much for that. I would like you to, at the council's request, to come back in six months. I'd like, because a lot of things on there were, we're going to look at policies and changes as needed, and I would, I mean, I know I'll be, I didn't miss all that many meetings, I don't think. But I didn't come on there until later, just for that. But I do think it's important to, including the minutes that all the council members do get, when those things are closed out, to note those in your meeting. And I would put audit closeout items or something, so that all the council can see those in their minutes as we're making progress on some of those other items. I think that is very important. I know Shannon Kane's no longer with us, but I did want to acknowledge that when she, she's the one that, when I was a newbie on that board, that kind of brought me along so I could serve the function that I do on the board. And I want to acknowledge, you know, her effort on your board all those many, many years. But I do thank you for taking this on. And I would also like, if you could share with the council, maybe on a quarterly basis, the progress that we're making relative to the revenues by those vacancy rates and around, because that's really important to the long-term cash flow, as you know, of the organization. So quarterly, probably, report that. In the minutes, you could just have, you know, have a meeting every month, but on a quarterly basis, share with us how we're making progress on that real metric, which is cash flow. Because, you know, cash flow is king in this kind of organization. And come back when the board knows what our plan is to get to that point. And I won't get ahead on the staff recommendations. I'll let those come. But I do support them when they're put up here. But once again, thank you very much and your folks. I mean, I think they honestly told the auditor what was going on there, and I think that allowed us to, what I think this council has been trying to do from the start, was to get a fresh start with this organization, and I think the auditor allowed us to do that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brulevier.
Mr. Mayor, one point that I would just like to make, that I think is a really important piece of this conversation, particularly as it relates to the public who are watching this conversation and who have had a chance to read some reports about this discussion in the media, and that is that the VB CDC is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and it operates as such. It's confusing, because the board members are appointed by the city council, and the executive staff is hired by the members of that board. But as it relates to the operations itself, the VB CDC is not a city agency. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that is not operated with taxpayer resources. Now, as Councilmember Moss has correctly pointed out, my understanding is that the properties that it manages are exempt from property taxes. So in effect, there is certainly taxpayer support of the organization. But I just want to make exceedingly clear for anyone who is watching that this is not a city agency, that it's, there is a very direct and important relationship. But I do believe, as I've seen in some of the reports about the management and alleged mismanagement that existed there, that some perceived that this was a city agency. And in fact, I just want to point out and make it clear that it is not.
Yes.
So I'd like to follow up on the liaison's feedback and have Andy come forward, because you had a third document in your Friday packet, which was the staff's recommendations and the way forward. And I'd ask Andy to come forward and emphasize the positives that's here. Jessica, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I think, I think I want to just pile on what Mike just said and John said, because I think there's a lot of positive going on here from what has been kind of a cloudy environment. And I just want Andy to emphasize that, and then bring some recommendations out that we are going to put on as a result of the audit and the management response, so that you understand that we are rolling our sleeves up and are committed to continue on to see if we can make this meet the goals that the council originally founded it for. So Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We agree, we're presenting, as Mr. Hanson said, we're really looking forward now. The auditor's job was to examine what happened and make recommendations for the future. And as staff, it's our job to also look at that and say, what additional things can be done so that we achieve certain goals for council? And so I want to start off by saying that staff agrees with all the auditor's recommendations. We also agree with the VB CDC's plan that was presented to you today. And I'd also like to suggest some goals, which are the context for how we came up with our recommendations. And I think one of them is very clear that came from our discussions a couple of years ago, is that the existing stock of affordable housing should be maintained in good condition, because it's a valuable resource that was created with the help of city investment, and it's a great resource to preserve for the future. We also think a critical piece is that VB CDC's activities should be aligned with the council's goals for neighborhoods and housing. And however those evolve in the future, there needs to be a continuous feedback loop where VB CDC's proposed activities are reviewed and we ensure that that happens. And the third thing, as several have pointed out, the organization and its asset management function needs to be sustainable. That is really the goal of what we started with, and we've had a definite hiccup here. So what VB CDC has proposed to do, based on the auditor's recommendations and some other steps that we're going to outline, should lead us to determine whether that is sustainable or how it can be sustainable. So as Mr. Hanson said, there are some very positive things here. I've worked with Jessica since she's been with the organization. She and the current staff, I think, are very capable, and they have a lot of experience. They have the most detailed knowledge of this organization and how it works. They have a very diverse and expansive housing stock, serves people with a variety of needs. This is not just affordable housing. Mr. Tim Capaldo is here from Human Services. VB CDC owns several really unique properties that were created for DHS clients, Department of Human Services clients, that they manage for that department. It's important to remember that those properties are a valuable asset, just meeting the needs of those special needs clients. Despite the concerns about the condition of housing, which were expressed at the closed session briefing and here as well, and because of that, Mr. Hanson asked our department to go and look at their housing stock. And so between the closed session briefing and today, our code enforcement staff visited 319 of VB CDC's properties. They looked at the outside of the properties, and what they found was no health or safety violations. They had 31 units, or 10% had minor exterior violations, and 21 units, or about 6%, had property maintenance violations, such as uncut grass or some kind of trash in the yard, something like that. So that is what we would call about the average for the city as a whole. It's not what we would expect for our partner in creating the best housing in the city, but they're on their way. These are not serious things. They are very able to be corrected and to have a solid foundation for the future. I want to add to what Jessica said about VB CDC's equity. They do have a very valuable stock of housing, even despite the depreciation reflected in the audit. That housing, if liquidated, would bring far more than is reported in the audit. As they also said, they have cash reserves that are appropriate for their reserve policy. And we're going to, I did speak to the finance director today, and we are going to work with VB CDC to review that, to make sure it's appropriate for today's conditions. As Jessica mentioned, they provide valuable housing and support services to veterans, a key population that I know this council has wanted to serve previously homeless veterans and disabled veterans, and veterans in danger of becoming homeless have been served by VB CDC. VB CDC is still able to obtain state and federal funding. Despite the recent issues, they are in good standing with the Virginia Housing Development Authority and HUD. They've received, have their properties have been inspected and have passed those inspections. And we also think that VB CDC can be a good partner with the city in its future housing and neighborhood roles, revitalization roles, if they become sustainable and meet the goals that I said before. So taking all that into consideration and recognizing also that because of the importance of this issue, the council should really have the best possible assessment of VB CDC's potential future, here are our staff recommendations. Number one has already been stated, but we have a little bit additional to say about it. City council should quickly fill the remaining and upcoming board vacancies. One option to consider is, on an interim or ex officio basis, is the appointment of appropriate city staff to serve on the board, to provide immediate staff members and to provide expertise and guidance, and this is something for you to consider. Number two, we think that we should Number two, we think that we should engage an outside agency to do an assessment of their properties and their property management, so that we can have the best possible view of whether this is a sustainable asset management process or not. And I've been able to learn that the Virginia Housing Development Authority would do such an assessment at no fee for us. They're not gonna give us a formal report, but they'll give us their findings. We can present those findings back to this body, the council and the VB-CDC board, and based on that, we can determine if we need more assessment or what the next steps would be. So our recommendation would be to go forward with that. Our next recommendation is what's been mentioned, immediately dealing with the short-term debt, especially the line of credit and the Grand Cypress apartments. We think Grand Cypress is eminently doable, and we'll be happy to work with them on seeing how that can best be done. We're not talking about the city refinancing it, but working to see what the best options are to do that. Recommendation number four, I think Mr. Moss has said this, we need, we commit to reporting back to the council liaisons and through them to council on a monthly and quarterly or as-needed basis on all aspects of the progress on implementing these steps. And number five is, if you think that all of these steps are appropriate, we recommend thinking, postponing any long-term significant decisions until we can basically stabilize the situation, get the assessment back, and then be in a position to say, we have a stable thing, where are we gonna go with it? We think it's important to get that assessment, take the steps that VB-CDC has outlined, and do those. And then recommendation number six would be, I think this is aligned with all of what everyone's thinking, is the auditor should do a follow-up at the appropriate time. Mr. Moss has suggested about 12 to 15 months to see how have we done, considering the review that was just recently completed. Those are our recommendations. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions? John?
Just two, two that I made at the time I haven't chanced up with Mike. One, I think when the assessment's great, I'm glad that worked out. But I would like to see that go to the manager, but I'd like to see it go to the board. So when it comes back to the council, we have the benefit of the board's and the staff's assessment of that report and what their plan of action is. And that way, when we get the report, we get it with something that's gonna happen. Think that's better for us. And Mike pointed out very greatly, very nicely, how this was not a city agency. So I'm much more in favor of ex officio members than voting members to maintain the separate but equal kind of status, meaning we're in, but we're not running the show and we're not voting, so it maintains its independence. But they get the benefit of our expertise on a recurring operational basis, which I think works well for them. And then Mike and Busy gotta go out and find three members who are willing to serve. But that would be my insight relative to the recommendations that you made.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I want to compliment everybody on the process, a good critical analysis and a very, very good response, and turning a bad situation into a good situation. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Should we?
Thanks, Andrew.
All righty, next.
So I'm bringing back a short briefing. Mr. Moss asked us to look at a six-week family leave policy. We were destined to come back based on this deferral date, and so we put together a quick briefing. And I think Mr. Moss has got a recommendation, but since we've done it, I think it would be good to just give the council an update from Regina on what we actually do, how does it compare to our other jurisdictions here in Hampton Roads, and potential for consideration going forward. And with that, take it away, Regina.
All right. So in 2017, I came before you, and we talked about the possibility of implementing a maternity and parental leave program. And then we established that program and put it into place effective January 1st, 2018. Our program has a couple of components. It provides for three weeks of paid leave for the birthing parent, and then it provides two weeks of paid leave for the non-birthing parent. The non-birthing parent can include both parents if we have a case of adoption, for example, okay? We also have a pretty unique aspect of our maternity and parental leave in that we have a one week for our employees who have to take, provide assistance to their parents. And this one week of leave can be taken at any point during the course of the year. It doesn't have to be one consecutive week. So we implemented this maternity and parental leave for two reasons. One was because we did have some interest expressed by city council. And the other reason is because we were looking at modernizing our employee benefits package, and this was certainly one way to do that. Our policy recognizes that we have employees at around the age of 45 as an average, and because of that, they're dealing with maternity needs, but they're also dealing with parental leave. So we wanted to have a policy that dealt with both ends of that spectrum. And so that's why we have the components in our policy as we do. I thought it would be interesting for you to see some of the stats included with our leave policy. So since we put this into place in 2018, we have had 77 cases of birthing parents use the leave. And then we've had 120 non-birthing parents. And again, that non-birthing can include adoptions. Not surprisingly, we've had larger use from employees who may have a need to take care of issues related to their parents. Now, they can use that leave for their parents as long as the parent has a condition that qualifies for family medical leave, all right? So looking at 2019 so far, the stats that we are showing really take into account a little bit more than the first quarter of this year. So right now, we're probably on pace to pass the 2018 numbers, but that remains to be When we implemented the policy, we discussed that maternity and parental leave is a slow-growing benefit, at least in the United States. It is a slow-growing benefit. And some of the research that we saw said that it was increasing at a rate of less than 1% in the United States. When we looked within our Hampton Roads region, what we found is that we are still the only city that is providing the benefit. Many of them have expressed interest in the policy, and we've given out our policy to many of the localities. One locality looks like they are very serious about implementing something soon. But right now, we are still the only locality that has this policy. I also wanted you to be aware of some of the other components that make up our leave program. For our Plan One and Plan Two employees, and for clarification, Plan One and Plan Two would be those employees that were hired into the city prior to January of 2014. Those employees earn annual leave and sick leave. And for sick leave, they're earning it at the rate of a day a month. Then our hybrid employees, and those are employees that are hired after January 2014, our hybrid employees have a different retirement package. And they, because of that package, we modified their leave benefit. They don't earn annual and sick as two separate buckets. They earn one bucket of PTO, paid time off. But incorporated with their benefits package from the state is a short-term disability component. So even without our maternity and parental leave policy, there would be some component of the hybrid employees that would be covered. Also, we have a leave donation program. Our leave donation program is available for our employees who may be short on leave or they may be out of leave. They can get leave from their fellow employees, and that leave donation does not have to be paid back. So as long as they have an F and L covered event, they can ask for leave donations. All right, so hopefully try to get all of this information in in a short period. But in conclusion, right now, our leave, our maternity and parental leave program is still unique in Hampton Roads. It may be growing, but right now, we're the only ones, and so we already stand out as far as our program is concerned. We do have multiple components available in our leave program, so there are other ways that our employees can get their time paid. But in discussing our program, we were supportive of increasing the maternity aspect from the three weeks to the four weeks.
Okay, any questions?
Well, as a, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, as a signal, I did send, I hope all of you saw the email that I sent out. I'm still strongly supportive of the six weeks. I still plan to come back and make that case, but I know everybody wants to have time. I'd rather have everybody on board than have a divisive issue. I think it's great that we are forward-leaning. You know, I always say it's, you know, mission first, but people always, that's a Navy phrase. I do believe that's true. And I think the strongest signal you talk about is what you do for people. I do know younger people who have children early on, they then, they end up consuming all their sick leave, and when they put their kids into daycare, which is a germ factory, which we all know, they keep getting sick, and next thing you know, they're always in the hole, and they're having a hard time managing their assets. And you really think you're gaining productivity, but you're not. You'd be better off if they came back to work, and then they had resources to call upon, and they're not, and they're not worried about, oh, my kid's sick, what can I do? I gotta take leave. I only have two days of leave left. I gotta get borrowed. So I think that's just a responsible way to go. But I do want to ask tonight, we just defer indefinitely, because I want to do some homework, and maybe you all do too. I've talked with some companies that already do six weeks in the area. I think there's a lot of things that we, I might, that we could do, but I think this is an easy thing to do. But I know some people had concerns about the fiscal impacts, so I guess it's time to think about that as the budget comes around, do our homework. But I am strongly supportive of the six weeks, and I plan to bring that back at the appropriate time. And I appreciate the objective assessment that you did. I realize we can't do like Google and these other places and give people a year off. I understand that. We're not in the private sector, don't suggest that, but I think six weeks is a fairly responsible choice, and I look forward to hearing from all of you. And thank you again very much.
Jessica.
I just had a couple of questions and then just kind of a comment. But as far as, do you know about over the next five years, how many people were anticipating leaving in terms of retirement?
Our turnover is somewhere around 8% now, so.
Are we projecting that to ramp up over the next five years?
It, that has increased already. So the 8% is a high for us. And that, when you include retirements, we're at 10%. So I don't, well, I don't anticipate it greatly increasing. I think it'll stay somewhere around there.
We're hitting our ceiling, a predicted ceiling that we wait, and because it's based on the economy improving, opportunity for people to go out, retire, and maybe work part-time, they stay occupied, very, you know, with under 3% unemployment in our region, people are picking them up quick. So I think, I think we're at the ceiling, Jessica, to be honest.
You don't think we're gonna be seeing.
I don't think it's going that way. I think we ramped up, we're hiring a lot of new people, and they're fairly young, and I think they're gonna see the value of public service.
So, and then the other question I had, on the, on the short-term disability, are we auto-enrolling them into that, or is that something they have to choose when they are putting their benefits together with the city at time of hiring?
For hybrid employees is part of their benefits package.
So they get it whether they want it or not?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted clarification on. The reason I brought up the question about retirement is I think part of what John's trying to do with this resolution is make sure that we are forward-thinking in the benefits that we're providing our employees, because we will be facing trying to find younger people and newer people that want to come work for us. And while we may not be able to be as competitive as the private sector, offering that benefit is an enormous burden off of families. As somebody who's had two premature babies, six weeks is not a lot of time to get better. And I can tell you, because my husband would be a teacher, and thank God, having the support of his administration as a teacher, he was able to be with me for almost all of the time that I was healing and that our kids were healing. And I think that we have to be progressive in this, and we have to acknowledge that people are having families in unique ways now, and those abnormal situations where, that were not really present 25 years ago are present today. And I really believe, and I agree with the deferral and making sure the public's on board with this, but I really believe if we want to be the area that attracts young people to not only live here but work here, we're gonna be forward on this regardless of what the area is doing. And I would really love for us to start looking at what's going on out west, because I happen to know that in places in Arizona, they have very aggressive leave policies that are very progressive and seem to be working out very well.
And we do, and actually, when we were putting together our program, I'm part of a national human resources group, and we certainly pulled those policies so we could monitor ours the same way, certainly.
Okay, Michael, then, Aaron.
Hi, Ms. Hilliard, thank you very much for being here and for this presentation. I just had a question about the term birthing parent. Is, I wonder if you could provide a little more insight into that term? Is it a, is it sort of a standard practice to differentiate between a parent and a birthing parent? And the reason I ask that, of course, is because families are comprised of many different, different types of families, and we're seeing that more and more. And, you know, as Jessica mentioned about attracting and retaining the brightest, the best talent from all over the country, I don't think we would want to necessarily make a differentiation between the experience of a mother or a father or people who adopt. And I just want to sort of honor the evolution of the definition of a family and honor the experience of being a parent in a way that's equitable. So I wonder if you could just share some information about that term?
Sure. And the things that you brought up are exactly why we were careful about the terminology that we use. So when we were doing our research, this was the terminology that was recommended. So that's what we were using, and we continue to monitor whatever the trends are, so we can make sure that we are, you know, being sensitive to whatever terminology should be used.
But not only terminology, but just the experience, I understand that there's an experience of childbirth, and so I do not want to diminish that experience. However, I also don't want to, I also want to honor the experience of being a parent more generally. So, I mean, is it typical to give different amounts of leave for a person who delivers a trial versus a person who doesn't?
Right. So we have.
Or do we want to lean in on this and consider being fully equitable?
We have discussed whether or not, because we do make that difference in the amount of leave that we have. We have separated and provide more to the birthing parent primarily because of the medical aspect. So without the medical aspect, and that's why when we are looking at adoption, we have it equal. So it is, it is simply because, it is shorter for both.
Part of the collaboration, I'm looking forward to find the consensus on this body, and then consensus with the public, because that's equally important.
Certainly.
That's why I've gotta take the time.
These are some things that I'm thinking about as we have this conversation.
Certainly. And.
I just want to thank you, Ms. Hilliard, for your presentation. It was, besides thorough and quick, I like those ones. But I just want to thank John as well for just allowing us time to build a consensus and do more research, and Michael, your insight on that, because I really didn't think about the terminology, how that plays a part in it. So thanks, Mike, for bringing that, and John, for willing to defer. So I think us building a consensus will make a lot different, make us stronger when we bring these type of things forward, so appreciate that.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Certainly, thank you.
Okay, council comments? Anybody? Yeah, Michael?
Everyone should have a copy of a resolution that was drafted related to the General Assembly Special Session that's scheduled to occur on July 9th.
Did you pass that out?
I did.
Okay.
And it's in this pile, here, let me get you one.
In this pile, right.
I've never had so many papers as I have in the last month and a half. I would simply ask that the council consider this resolution either today, or I'm also happy to wait until the next meeting when we can have a more complete discussion. But I think it's important, if we're going to have a discussion about the subject that was called by the governor, that we have a more full and complete discussion of all the aspects that are related to the topic. And I certainly think mental health services throughout the Commonwealth is one.
And I certainly think mental health services throughout the Commonwealth is one of the many aspects of that conversation. So anyway, I would just welcome feedback on that. And if, in fact, we are going to consider recommendations to the General Assembly, I would ask the council to consider this as one of the recommendations.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this point, if you, yeah, John.
Well, I think, I have no, I think it's best to put that on a published thing at our next meeting when people get a chance to see, and they want to come down. But I wanted to talk about the state budget opportunities, this VML brief, just briefly. I'm not going to go through every page, but in this brief, you know, as you know, as a result of the federal tax reform, there was a windfall to the Commonwealth, which means it's a tax on Virginia residents of $1.2 billion, because there's no free money. Now, this particular brief didn't talk relative to the, I'll call it the resident taxpayers not getting, it left, it was neutral as regard as to what should happen to that. But on page 10 of that brief, it did talk about retaining the business tax revenue from federal tax reform changes that would add insurance to the revenue growth projections. You know, I don't know how much of that $1.2 billion, it doesn't, maybe it's in here somewhere, and I dismissed it. And I know we're not being asked to take a position, but the Virginia municipal league is financed by taxpayers, which do include businesses in the Virginia Beach, and we are a member. And obviously, they're just providing an explanation. But I know you meet with the, our members of our General Assembly, and I'll engage them as well, but it would be nice to know from Bob Mathias, just what is that quantity? How much money are we talking about? Because any tax on a business has an opportunity cost. And I realize they dangle all this, like I say, you know, all the things you can get if you take other people's money, but they never talk about the consequences of taking it. So I just want to make sure that if we have a VML rep, and VML is taking a position in support of this, which it didn't say it was doing in here, it's just information, that they would, whoever that rep is would come back to this body and ask us what we think about any tax increases that the VML might be advocating for. Because I, I don't want to, I don't mind being held accountable for something I agreed to, but I don't want to be accounted by inference to something I didn't agree to. And I don't know, increasing taxes on business is a smart move if we're trying to grow the economy.
Thank you. If you don't mind, at this point, I'd like to make a statement. I think that would point a, give a point of clarification that, you know, might be helpful in some ways. You know, never, as a mayor or as a resident of Virginia Beach, have I been more proud of this city in a response to a, you know, a tragic event that has happened. And I think one of the most important things that we have going forward is to let the public know that we still have the best public safety in this nation for our city our size. I think we have to reinforce that confidence and reestablish that confidence, you know, going forward. I think the actions of our police department were superb, and all of public safety beyond superb. The vice mayor and I had a number of interactions over the last couple of weeks with, you know, members of public safety and the FBI and everything. And I will just state that I have complete confidence in their abilities to take forward what is going to be necessary. We're just starting a very long journey now that we're going to be investigating things and going forward. And everybody in this room, everybody in this city, every one in this nation wants some answers. And I just want to state that I have confidence that dealing with the people that we've been dealing with, I think our public safety demonstrated extreme professionalism going forward, and I have confidence going forward that they're going to be able to do this. This is going to be a lengthy process. There are hundred people, hundreds of people that require interviewing. We just have availability, not too long ago, access to Building 2. It's going to be a long and lengthy process. But the thing is, if necessary going forward, that we have some form of external review down the line, you know, once the, you know, the, you know, the investigation, you know, comes to some type of conclusion, if this would be helpful in showing the public that once again, we are being transparent, we are being open and honest. And as I said before, when Mr. Ramirez was up here, over the number of years with a number of other investigations, certainly not of this magnitude, I think this city has demonstrated the fact that they're willing, were willing to put things out there and take corrective actions that's going to be necessary. But once again, I have confidence in this body that we're going to be moving forward in a way that will demonstrate, and, you know, we're going to, you know, we're going to become stronger because of this in a lot of ways. But I just wanted to say that right now, there was, you know, some things out there about the possibility of, you know, you know, some other forms of investigations. But I just want to say that, you know, based on what I've seen and what the vice mayor's seen, and I think what we have demonstrated to the people of Virginia Beach and our nation that, you know, we have some outstanding people working in this city. And I just thought I would go on record as saying that. Thank you.
Let me make one comment, too. I wanted to let everybody know that I went to the Virginia Municipal League Committee, Legislative Committee meeting, and that was held six days after the shooting. And when I got there, a lot of people were very surprised that I was there. Of course, they knew what happened, and they were very comforting and encouraging. But one of the things that really, really encouraged me is that they added to the agenda that day, a discussion and a request for us to vote on a measure to recommend to the governor regarding gun legislation. And there was a, you know, brief discussion. We talked about what happened, and then everyone voted to move forward with the measure, except for one person, to ban weapons in government buildings. And so just wanted to let everyone know that that conversation did take place, there was a move by that legislative body, and they have recommended that particular action to the governor.
Thank you.
Could I add to that, Mr. Mayor? I, I spoke with the executive director of the Virginia Municipal League about the same meeting and asked her about the policies and legislative positions of VML. And among other comments, she noted that it has been the position of VML for more than 10 years and is embedded in their policies now that we should have local options for the regulation of firearms in this state.
Thank you, John.
Well, I'll just wait till the agenda.
Yeah, we're going to obviously talk about this during the agenda review. It's a very important topic. Okay?
Okay. Under ordinances and resolutions, we have speakers. You guys want to mark here? Items 1 A and B, 3 A and B, 4 and 5. So that's what we have speakers on, under ordinances and resolutions. I would also say item 7, and Barbara, you probably know more about this, the Samfiddler Road issue, the recommendation is for denial. We don't have anybody speaking in favor signed up, but I kind of feel that they might show up.
I haven't heard from anyone.
Okay.
Either pro or con, but I do question that this should be approved. I think denial is the right thing, because it's, but I have not heard from anyone.
Okay, so then, based on what I, what I read, does anybody have issues with anything that's not being pulled?
Could you just go over it again?
Sure. Items 1 A and B are pulled. Items 3 A and B, item 4, and item 5.
Everything else would be consent.
If y'all are okay with it.
Um, hey, you, you, you. Oh, we're just in, um, we're just in ordinance, right? Okay.
Okay. So then, under planning, we have Indian Cove Resort Association, modification of conditions, ray overflow parking, and relocation of pavilion within the campground, 1053 Sandbridge Road, Princess Anne. Timberlake Shopping Center Associates LLC for an amendment to the Timberlake PDH-1 land use plan, add an indoor recreational facility, Rose Hall. DML Designs, trading as Trinity Tattoo Company, Misharam Gold VABLP for tattoo parlor and body piercing, 2720 North Mall Drive, Rose Hall.
Yes.
Okay. AT Associates LLP for conditional use permit, car wash facility, 2670, yes? Josephine Parker Automobile Repair Garage, Ray Bulk Storage at 570th Central Drive, and that's a deferral to August 6th. Is that okay, Mr. Tower?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next one, Misharam Gold VABLP, conditional use permit, indoor recreational facility at 2720 North Mall Drive, Rose Hall, and that's also a deferral to August 6th. Mr. Berluci?
Sir.
Okay. Number 7, ordinance to amend city zoning ordinance, A103, notification of property owners, Section 107, time limitation for city council referral to zoning amendments to planning commission for action. Yes, no? Okay.
I do have a question, I'm sorry.
It's too late.
No, it's not. We, we can do it. I just need further clarification on ordinance item I2 in the last week, I guess we can discuss this, but on H.
I'm sorry, 2?
Yeah, with the mobile.
Certain mobile food units.
That's just putting us in a compliance with state law that passed.
All right, all right, we're good.
Right? Am I not wrong?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay. I know I simple-minded.
All right, all right.
All righty, there we go. Clarification, good things. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to exemptions from the open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussions, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public offenders, officers. Oh, sorry about that one. Oh, Lord. You know, my ADHD took over, folks, I do apologize. Appointees or employers of public bodies pursuant to Section 2.2311A-1, council appointee, council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, and council appointee evaluation. Somebody please recommend me with a motion.
Second.
You got it.
Do we have a motion?
We got a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
It was the second?
I was also the second.
Hi.
Mr. Moss?
Hi.
Mr. Ross?
Hi. I just wanted to make eye contact with you.
Mr. Berluci?
Hi.
Mr. Tower?
Hi.
Mr. Fluton?
Hi.
Absent by service.
Hi.
Okay, can we recess in? Five-minute break, folks?